There we go. Good morning, the school board meeting for June 9th, 2015 is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mrs. Henderson.
Here.
Mrs. Neese.
Here.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Here.
Michelle Erwin, Director of Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Erwin?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, wait a minute, Mrs. Erwin, aren't you going to tell us a little bit about yourself? And...
Am I singing and dancing today, too?
Yeah, and, you know, and, and, you know, did you bring anybody with you this morning?
I have my buddies back here on senior staff. All of you raise, raise your hands.
Well, thank you for joining us today, Mrs. Erwin.
Could we invite the back to tell us?
A little bit about her? Okay, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Neese, members of the board. On this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 21 consent items, one action item, and six information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which our changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Administrative staff recommendations were added, and there is one consent addition, item F7 on student expulsions, one consent revision, item F22 on the 2015 educational plan survey, one revision to action item G29 on revisions to policy 6340, modifications and alterations of school or to school buildings.
Do I have a motion to adopt this morning's June 9th, 2015, school board meeting's agenda and its revisions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mr. Craig. Is there any discussion? Okay. Is the vote coming up? It's morning, so it's moving slow. There it is. Okay, everyone, please vote. Like I say, we did all those voice votes yesterday. I'm like, I was ready to go, all in favor. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, on to administrative staff recommendations. Dr. Bingley, let's move on.
Thank you, Ms. Neese, and members of the board. Under the item A5, you have four administrative staff recommendations to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Is there any discussion? Okay, everyone, please vote. At least the list doesn't go all the way to the bottom this time. Motion passes unanimously. Are there any recognitions, Dr. Bingley?
There are no recognitions this morning.
Are there any resolutions?
There are no resolutions, proclamations, and there are no presentations.
What will we do? Okay, we are now at the public comment portion of the agenda. Before I read the whole phrase there, are there any public speakers signed up? Since I don't have anything in front of me.
Little boy in back wants to talk.
As I look over to our people over there to the side. Like I say, you're not used to this going so quickly. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Please be reminded that profane, abusive, or slanderous speech is not permitted. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name for the record. Okay, so we have... It's an all-new record. Only three people have signed up to speak. The first speaker will be Richard Smith, followed by Darcy Addo, followed by Amanda Elliott. So, Mr. Smith.
Good morning, Richard Smith, Brevard Federation of Teachers. I was here with you guys yesterday for that marathon that you had interviewing superintendent candidates, and I wanted to come today and say, first of all, that I thought you guys did an excellent job. I also think that the company did an excellent job of helping kind of narrow more than 100 applicants.
106.
Okay. I would not in any way presume to understand or state, you know, what needs to happen, but I will tell you this. From what I heard from the candidates, I see an opportunity for Brevard Federation of Teachers, for all the employees, to move forward with any of the candidates that you guys select, and if your selection process continues like it was yesterday, I know you'll pick a good person. I will say this. I hope that we will kind of put major changes that could occur over the summer, maybe in the fall, kind of on the side for a little bit, and here's why I say that. I hear some differences, and they're not, it's not one is good and one is bad, but I hear some differences in the candidates. And to me, if I were a candidate, and I walked in whenever it is, and some fairly major change had occurred, I'd be a little, it'd be a little difficult. So may I simply suggest that we just kind of set things aside for now, that anything that's kind of on the front burner, can we slide it to the back burner and just kind of wait and see what the direction of the new superintendent would be? At any rate, I do want to thank you. I do want to say this, too. There's always people out there, and there's a lot of them that watch, and they just watch, and that's what they do. They watch and they think, hmm. There's some people out there that cheer for you. There are some people out there, and there's a very small number of them, that are what I call pickers. They pick. They, you know, maybe you used this adverb instead of that adverb, or maybe you did this or said that. I want to tell you that I am not a picker. I think that, and I am a cheerer at this point in time. I think that what's going on lifts my spirits, gives me hope for the future, and I will say to all the pickers out there, you might want to wait before you say negative things because I believe that some really good things are in the offing. Anyway, thank you, guys, and have a good morning.
Thank you. You didn't bring your son with you this time.
Handouts. Teachers, we do that. Last week, I spent some time reviewing the quintile data that the DOE recently released. Although test data is not really congruent with how I measure success, it was interesting, and I like data. I decided to align the test results to free and reduced lunch data to quickly demonstrate two things. One, you can't test away poverty, and two, poverty is essential to the conversations about education. It's not a theory, it's well-replicated social science. Why does that matter, and why am I telling you that today? Because there's a recommendation on the agenda today for the board to approve the submission of Title II Part A grant, and I'm bringing this up for conversation today, hoping that consideration will be given in the writing of this grant to some of the forward-thinking, research-based best practices that we know about the role of socioeconomic status in academic success. Or perhaps the grant writers will consider consulting some of the schools that present as statistical anomalies in Brevard County when they're considering their needs-based assessment. Since Title II Part A calls for creativity in addressing professional development and school-level leadership, assuredly these are aligned priorities. I found a couple of significant anomalies in the data. Schools that have high poverty and relatively low percentages of students in the bottom quintile. And I noticed a couple of things that these schools had in common. First, they're all in North Brevard, which I just found interesting, and they all had specific mission statements that focused on affective domains, things like global citizenship, character education, and civic growth. I haven't, can't honestly say that I've been to these schools because they're in North Brevard and I live in Palm Bay, but I just think that that's interesting. Enterprise Elementary in Port St. John has 78% of their student population receiving free or reduced lunch, but only 9% of their students scored in the bottom quintile of FSA. I thought that was interesting. It's a glass-er quality school. Their mission statement focuses on lifelong learning and global citizenship. Atlantis Elementary in Port St. John has 52% free and reduced lunch, and only 8% of their students are in the bottom quintile of FSA. They're a nationally recognized character education school. Pinewood Elementary in Mims has 67% free and reduced lunch, and only 6% of their students are in the bottom quintile of FSA. Their mission statement talks about personal responsibility, civic growth, and physical well-being. So from a statistical standpoint, these are anomalies. So, again, I haven't been there, but I think that they're interesting. And I'm wondering if before we write this grant application, instead of doing the same thing that we've probably always done, maybe we can consider not putting our teachers in the same skill and drill sort of situation that we always are in and likely getting the same results that teach to the test and then produce the same general poverty aligned with student achievement, fails to recognize how socioeconomic status aligns with student success or lack thereof. Maybe we can consider if and to what extent things like character education, global citizenship, and whole-child education can ultimately drive academic achievement in spite of unfavorable socioeconomic odds.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Amanda Elliott.
Good morning. My name's Amanda Elliott, and I graduated a couple years ago from high school, top of my class, straight-A student all the time, also with my associate's degree. And so I know education from the inside as a student. And I'm here because of a significantly profound experience I had in 10th grade. It was an American history class, by far my least favorite class because it consisted of so much memorizing names and dates, and it was so boring. During one day during lecture, a student raised his hand and asked, "Teacher, why do we need to know this?" And you could just hear the dread of the classroom. Oh, you asked the question. Oh, my God, you should know by now not to ask that question. And we brace ourselves, as we have learned to do, for a long-winded rant from the teacher about this great learning opportunity and how we are squandering it and how we should be better and work better and blah, blah, blah. But she surprised me. She turned around, looked the teacher, looked the student straight in the eye, and said, "Because you're getting the test on it next week. That's why." And I was shocked by the answer, but I was more shocked by my anger and the anger of the classroom at the question. It's a valid question. Why? Why do we need to know this? But by the time you are in 10th grade, you have heard this question again and again, year after year, and the answers are never good enough. And by the time you were in 10th grade, you were just there to get it over with. There are better questions that should be leading classroom discussion, better questions that students can be asking. What do we do about global warming, about overpopulation in India? You know, real questions that facilitate passion and curiosity and learning. You don't have to force children to learn. If they're passionate about something, you can't stop them. I don't know how many hundreds of years ago Socrates said this, but he said, "Education isn't the filling of a vessel, but the lighting of a fire." I'm afraid that in attempting to fill what we think is a vessel, we extinguish that fire instead. I think we need to seriously consider what we are doing when we fixate on testing. Testing and learning are not the same thing, and making the test the end, an end to a mean, it's dangerous. We can do much better. Why don't we? Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. The board wishes to thank this morning's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. Board member comments? Come on, guys. Mrs. Belford.
I would just like to thank Amanda for coming out this morning. I know that she probably has much more exciting things on her plate today to do rather than being at the school board meeting here in, you know, the morning in June. So thank you for your commitment to come out and share that information with us.
Anybody else?
I'll just say, I asked that same question when I was in school, too, so, and I, I don't, it went unanswered for me for a long time, and I finally figured out the answer after I got out of college. Why do I take all these courses that don't seem to have any relevance to what I'm going to do in my future? And then when I got a job and I had to do something that I knew nothing about, I realized I had to buckle down and teach myself something whether I liked it or not. And so it was the ability, I learned it was the ability to teach myself something whether I liked it or not that was going to make me successful in the future. And that's about the best answer I've come up with for courses that don't seem to have relevance. It's the ability to learn it, study it, and succeed at it, and that's what I go by. So it's an age-old question. There's an answer. Hope that helps.
Well, Amanda, I would just like to ditto what they said, and I hope you would consider a career as a future classroom teacher. You're the type of teacher we would love to have. So, and I would also say, Darcy, I would really, thank you for looking at this information because a lot of people are the first to point out areas that we need to improve on, but it's nice when people point out areas that we're doing things right. Dr. Bingley or Dr. Reinhardt, I don't know, especially since these are your schools, if you have anything you want to add. But congratulations to these schools for beating the odds because we know that schools with high poverty have an even harder hill to climb. And so I'm assuming that these schools, you've talked with them, and you know the best practices they're doing, but is there anything you can add to this? Or Dr. Bingley?
Well, we mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned here, but we mentioned with our principals, you know, even right down to the survey elements with teachers in the EDI, which we had like 84%, they're some of the same schools. You don't have to be in the schools very long to understand the field, the culture, you know, the commitment. And there are others on this list. When you see that there are, there are some others that if you compare their poverty percentage with schools like them, not only here in Brevard, but in the rest of the state, that's a lower percentage than what you would expect on this list. So, yeah, I, absolutely. We try to learn. We brought those principals together along with teacher leaders, what, Deborah, last week, to just kind of hear from them. You know, what are the things from a cultural perspective that you would advise other teachers, other principals, other campuses that seem to drive this mindset among your teaching faculty, and then ultimately these results that we seem to see? So we're already doing some of that.
Anything? Mr. Craig? Okay. That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Neese. There are 21 agenda items under this category, five with prior information and 16 without prior information.
Okay, does any board member wish to pull any items?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
F16.
Okay, F16, which is the 2015, is that the 2015, 2017 inter-institutional? I can't read the rest of it.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Henderson? Okay, I'm going to pull, I'm just going to go from left to right here. I'm going to pull the school board's casualty insurance, and I want to pull the reappointment nominations of annual contract teachers. F14. Mr. Ziegler?
You got F9.
I did.
F27.
Okay, okay. And, Ms. Craig? Oh, Mr. Craig, God. 12 hours yesterday, Mrs. Belford, my apologies. Okay, 12-hour days do not serve me well. That's okay, somebody called.
That's a compliment, but...
Okay. Mrs. Belford.
I actually, anything I was going to pull is covered. I am going to have an information item that I'll pull for discussion, but...
Okay. So Pam, did you get all those? Oh, okay. I heard F26, the student accommodation plan. Yeah, I was really surprised you didn't pull that one. Okay.
I want to see Dane this morning.
Yeah, I was going to say, Dane, I didn't want you to be left out back there. Okay, so did you get all those pulled? Okay, so except for that long list of items, see what happens when we work 12 hours the day before? Okay. So, motion to approve, any item that was left standing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I will get this right. Motion was made to approve by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Is there any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, first-pulled item was mine on the school board's casualty insurance, and so, Mr. Langford, come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning. Guess I just have some questions because in years past, we've seen some reductions.
Yes.
And so, of course, my first question is, what happened this year? And... I know, slacking off on us there.
I know.
And I see some new things in there, and I guess I just want to understand that they're not just new buzzwords, that we're actually getting some good return on investment?
Yes, I wouldn't make a recommendation that I didn't think was appropriate to protect the board's best interests, but let me talk about our oldest policy, and it's probably our excess workers' compensation policy.
Okay.
The biggest, and obviously that had a $20,000 increase without looking at the page, but ultimately what happened is, last year, our estimated premium or our estimated payroll was $335 million. This year, our estimated payroll is $348 million. That policy is driven by an increase in payroll because it's an increased exposure to the insurance company. Therefore, they demand a bit more premium. On top of that, the number of carriers that are providing excess workers' compensation around the country is starting to decline. And I can give you some experience because when I first started here, we had a very low price for excess workers' comp.
Right.
It was about $148,000 a year. A lot of carriers made some errors in their underwriting, and in fact, they did for our policies, and to be honest with you, that was the best policy we've ever purchased because on one year alone, we received $900,000 in return from our excess workers' comp policy.
So the good old days are over?
Those good old days are over.
Okay.
Obviously, as you know, medical care is appreciating every year, and that's partially driving the price, but also the fewer number of carriers. And in fact, there's really only about four carriers that are offering that. I can tell you that the closest that we had to the policy we have with Safety National was Arch Specialty. They were very competitive, but they're brand-new into the marketplace. They were about a 2% increase from where we are, offering the same coverage, but because they're brand-new...
We don't know their track record.
And they're slightly higher. I just felt saying with Safety National was the better of the, of those two.
Okay.
We did contact Midland and Midwest. Some of them wanted a minimum deductible of $750,000 per claim.
Ouch.
So, you know, when you start getting into those types of discussions, it just felt better. Our premium was really the lowest, saying with Safety National, and they offered the best terms, and they've been doing this an awful long time. They're very experienced in this particular area. So that's what we're dealing with, with excess workers' compensation.
Okay.
The other area that I did recommend was our cyber liability policy, and I know I've talked about this for a couple of years, but just to give you something that hit the news late, just, I think this week, actually, somebody in China accessed our federal database and sold 4 million employee files from China. Now, I don't know if the federal government has a excess liability policy. I'm assuming they do not, but the average cost to protect an employee whose information has been stolen varies between $188 and $194 per claim.
So give us an example of what could happen and what would this policy come in and do for us?
Well, the, the, let me give you an idea of what hackers are doing now, and we have a terrific IT department. I don't...
So it's not Gino's fault?
It's not Gino's fault. In fact, they do a terrific job, but the one thing we do house in all of our IT department is everybody's social security number, their dates of birth, their names. On top of that, just because I'm starting to understand a lot about health insurance lately, we transfer, we have 12, a little under 12,000 people that we handle in benefits, including dependents, their social security numbers, their names, their date of births, all transferred between an outside entity. Our food service department, people will use their credit card and put money down so their kids can draw on that as they get their lunch every day. So their credit card numbers, their names, all of that data is housed on a computer program. And when you think about the exposure that's involved when it comes to anybody who might be able to hack from China or even from Palm Bay, that information being available, even though we have great security systems, I don't want to belabor that enough, there's always a chance someone can gain access to that. And if they do, think about that cost of $188 to $200 per file that's stolen. And when you start rounding those costs up to how many are, you know, we will clearly, on a large breach, exceed the deductible of $25,000.
So we have, so you're saying if that information gets breached, we have liability to the individuals to that tune? Is that an automatic, that we have to pay out that much to each individual?
Certainly what you would want to offer, and what's great about the policy here...
I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
Where do you get that dollar figure from?
Well, what that would include is the response costs. So for example, this particular policy, if there is a loss, they would assign a coach, somebody who would help us walk through the entire process. They will assign somebody to help us with taking calls on those whose information has been breached. They also set up the contracting with somebody who would do credit monitoring, and that's covered within their policy. So if you have like a LifeLock, generally after a breach has taken place, and I've seen this with other cities and counties who information has been breached, they'll offer those, those individuals whose information has been breached, a year or a year and a half of LifeLock services so that it's not being used to, by this person who, or individuals who obtained that information to get other credit card services and steal their intellect, their financial ID, so to speak. But they provide that sort of stuff, the call center, they also provide an insurance policy. Say, for example, somebody does breach, they use that information, and that creates a financial cost to the individual whose information has been stolen. This policy will also provide liability coverage for that particular loss. So if we are sued as a result of that loss because we failed to properly safeguard, because that's the claim that could come out of that, we would have coverage to pay for that type of loss. It's subject to the $25,000 deductible, obviously, but depending on the size of the loss, we could be much greater than $25,000 with regards to that loss.
Okay, I know you had a question.
Did this cyber liability insurance require us to have a certain level of security in place? Did they require us to make any changes, or they just covered us?
What they required us to do, and we did this last year, it's the same company that, it's the same insurance company that we did this last year, because remember, I wanted to look at this last year, but I just felt, cost-wise, it wasn't the right time, and I think this is the best time. They asked us to fill out a three- or four-page application describing how our IT system works, where the files are stored, how they're stored. In fact, Gino's department provided all of this information as part of the application that we provided them.
So wait a minute, how secure is that information, then?
Well, it's pretty secure. It went out on a secure server to them. They looked at this and, as a result, offered us the premium we have...
Okay.
They looked at this, and as a result, offered us the premium we have, based on our security protocols. And I think ba, based on our size, you know, $21,000, I thought, was a reasonable figure, based on our size of an organization and the security protocols we have in place.
We just had an audit done on our security through McGlady. Did they look at that?
They didn't look at that, no. But I'm sure if I share that with them, who knows? Maybe, probably not this year, but next year, we might be able to use that to lower the premium even further.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm gonna make a comment, 'cause Mark and I have had this conversation. This may be in the "for what it's worth" category, but, um, you know, he, he's done a great job. Uh, we, we're protected now against a hundred-year storm. You know, a while ago, we weren't, when we took some dollars from that, but we are. Our workers' comp is now in a position where we've got adequate. This was the one place that we felt was left, to protect the organization. And, and if you notice, the, the, the federal government has already offered to pay for all of those employees, to get a kind of service to get their. We ourselves, in the past, have had internal employees behave improperly, put others in jeopardy, and we had to do the right thing. And that was, give all those employees a, a potential, get your credit check, get your, we did all of that. And it's not free. So I, I agree with Mark. I think this is the, the kind of last, maybe the new frontier of protecting the organization against what could potentially be something that we just would not have imagined perhaps a decade ago.
Actually, some things that this carrier, on top of that, some things this carrier suggested when we were communicating with them is, uh, a, a cyber terrorist act, where they would capture your information and wouldn't release it unless you paid them a ransom. That's where they're kind of seeing the future could be when it comes to IT exposure. And what this policy would do would help us restore that and cover any business loss interruption. So if we had a time where, because we didn't have that information available, they would make those funds available to us to help us in, in our time of need. So I thought this was a very good policy, and that's why I'm recommending it to you.
Okay, any, yes.
You, you mentioned that we take credit card data, like, for lunches and things of that nature. I thought that was an external service that we use. So then would this cover us for an externally contracted service breach?
Yes, anything that their, their contract with us wouldn't cover. Or if we're sued directly, and for some reason, you, I'm your risk manager, and I like to write into every single contract, along with Harold Byssline, that they will indemnify. But there's, when it comes to litigation, their attorneys are gonna try and get out of as much of that as they possibly can, and we're gonna try to make sure they do cover us. That's what happens when there's a, an issue. If, for some reason, a judge were to rule differently on our contract, I'd like to have this as kind of a little backup to help us in the event that that does occur.
And the last question, uh, did they require us to do a penetration test? And have we, and Gino, have we ever done a penetration test? 'Cause if we haven't, I think we should.
He'd have to ask you about that, but they did not require that of us.
Yeah, I'm glad you refreshed my memory, 'cause when we filled this out last year, I wasn't sure whether they asked a question or not. But the answer is, we have done one, working with McGlady, actually, last year, uh, through their audit. They had mentioned that they did provide those services. So even though they did not ding us on that, they did not require, we volunteered, we all, asked them to do this penetration study for us, which they did last summer. Summer because it was, uh, it's a rather intrusive process done thoroughly. And, you know, while we have classes and everything going on, so they did that last summer. McGlady has worked very well with us. They came back. We went through the list, got them rectified. And they're actually in the process right now of doing the next, uh, level of penetration based on, uh, you know, just more complicated formulas. And I'm not an expert in that area, that's why we're letting them do it.
Thank you.
Okay, we good? Okay, answer to my questions, so unless I hear anything else, I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Since I pulled it, I'll move to approve, and Mr. Craig seconded. Further discussion? Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, second item on the list was mine also. Reappointment of the annual contract teachers. And this one is, I just wanted to follow up, because in years past, um, we had some concerns, at least I did. In years past, when we went to, everyone was an annual contract teacher. I like to call them migrant teachers, because it seems like that's what we have anymore, since everyone's an annual contract teacher. Where are we at now, Dr. Pace, in terms of, or, Mr. Hickey, where are we at? Uh, in years past, we've had a lot of annual contract teachers out there, not knowing where they're gonna work in August. Are we in much better shape this year?
We are in much better shape. As you know, last year, Jim successfully negotiated the contract with BFT to reappoint annual contract teachers with their second effective or highly effective evaluation. So that was done. We're down to seven teachers in the AC pool, who are still looking for homes. Six of those are elementary ed, and they're primarily Central and South, and, and some Beachside, as well as one guidance counselor. But our principals are scheduling interviews for those folks, where they have openings, and we have absolute confidence that we'll find them homes very, very soon. We are releasing ads for North Area Elementary Schools, because folks don't wanna travel quite that far, as well as for some of our secondary positions that are open. We currently have 75 ads posted. But 16 of those are in speech language. That is a, a critical need.
Okay, so not only do people know they have jobs, they know what schools they're gonna be at?
What they'll be teaching.
And it is only June 9th? Wow, that is huge steps up from, what was it, two, three years ago, when we were well over 100, if I recall?
Yes, and, and particularly, you know, two years ago, when we went to six of seven, that was, that was a tough year for our secondary schools. But we're in much better shape, particularly because now, as we are grow, growing as a district, there's some additional projection built in that allows for some of those folks. And our title, schools, stay-title schools, which again, allowed for some additional positions. So everything is much more settled this year, and, and hopefully, you're not hearing the angst from teachers. I, I know we're not. And Barbara Davis is working very carefully with both principals and teachers, looking for jobs, to help them find places to go.
Okay, well, I'm thrilled to hear that. Questions or comments from board members?
I would just like to comment, thank you so much for that work, because in, in previous years, I have heard that angst, absolutely, even though I was not on the board. I got a lot of that feedback. And this year, I've actually heard from a lot of teachers that are so very thankful that they don't have to go through the summer with that stress. So, thank you, Mr. Hickey, for making that happen.
That stability is good for kids and teachers.
Okay, okay, anybody else? Okay. Well, since I pulled the item, I'll move to approve the item.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? As soon as the item comes up, oh, there it is, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item on the list. Uh, what do we show here? Okay, F-16. That would be, I think, Mr. Craig, not Mr.? Yes.
Yes, F-16 is the dual enrollment agreement. And I know we've all had a, a chat with, uh, Ms. Van Meter regarding this. And I just wanted to, uh, expound on a couple of things that I asked, because I think it's, uh, it's critical going forward, that we continue to look, um, and I know that she's gonna pull this information. But when we look at, at, at the cost of, of, of this program, which I think is a phenomenal program, and a great choice for our, our parents and our students, um, across the county. Uh, and I asked what the total enrollment was, about 4,600, I think you said, something around that area. It came out to about 6%, 7% of our total student population, not just, you know, looking at the, at the secondary level. So a, a pretty good amount of people taking advantage of it, and I, and I think it's a great thing. My, my question is, is that as we continue to look at the, at, at cost and trying to control that, what is the return on investment of that, of that, um, cost per student? And specifically, um, how do we see students that are enrolling? Where, where are the holes, where, where we have people that are, that are not completing, that we're paying for a, a class, or, or multiple classes, that may not complete those classes, or that may not complete, um, the, the entire, uh, I don't wanna use the entire program, because every program's a little different, and every student's enrolling in different classes. But, um, are we getting the return on investment across the board? And if we're not, let's make sure that we figure out if there are some, and working with Eastern Florida to make sure if there's some, uh, some common themes, if we pull a thread and go, okay, why is this one area not, uh, giving us the return on investment? And by return on investment, I mean, our students are walking out with a, with a certificate in hand, or with, uh, a better knowledge, and not, uh, just, uh, utilizing it as a, as another place to go during the day. So I wanna make sure that, that we continue to look at that, because I think that is one area that we could, it may not be significant, but we can look at, at where the, the, the money maybe needs to be thinned down a little bit as well, to control those costs. Uh, the second thing that, that, uh, I'll ask Dr. Bingley is, when's, when did you have a conversation with Dr. Ritchie regarding this, uh, this program?
Uh, I haven't had a conversation with Dr. Ritchie, you know, quite a while, related to dual enrollment.
I guess my question would be, why not?
Well, primarily because Cindy has been dealing with his individuals, and, and they're at the table on a regular basis over this.
Okay, I, I think when we're looking at a program that is, uh, that's in the red, um, for us, we need to have that, that leadership-level talk. There are people in this community and the Eastern Florida, um, Foundation that, that have resources available that we can look to. And we need to build those partnerships, so that we actually, at least, explore the opportunity to, to help us with this cost. Realizing it's a state mandate, and, and they, that's their position. But, uh, we're a little unique in regard. We can do better, and we can, we can talk, and, and see if there are, there are some ways to, to bring those together. So I would, I would recommend that, that as we transition, that you utilize that as part of your pass-down, to make sure that that conversation is opened up to the next superintendent, and that we, that we go after that. And make sure that this truly is a partnership, because that's what this says. It's a, it's a partnership, and we need to make sure that, that we're, you know, this, this is good for kids. So let's, let's see if we can not only keep it alive, but improve upon it.
I, I'll just reply to one. You know, obviously, my conversation with the, Dr. Ritchie came about certainly when the world changed, and we had the legislature in the 11th hour. That's when we were able to get, uh, you know, a good working relationship for that first year, where he understood, okay, we kinda got dealt a, a hand at the end game there. And where we all came around the table and said, let's understand, what do we do with this in year one? It, it certainly has been their position, and they're right, that it is within the law that, um, we, we do have to pay this amount for the tuition. As well as, within that law, is, we are not, um, we're really not allowed to say we're gonna limit, um, the number of kids who wanna take dual enrollment. In that conversation, and, and I think Cindy's done a pretty good job, we really did cut back. And, and I, I heard your, your comment, Mr. Craig, uh, on some of those that didn't either seem to be leading to industry credential, or didn't seem to be leading to AA degree. We jettisoned quite a few of those course, what, 1,600? 600? And tried to pare it down to those that were gonna be, a, again, giving that return on investment. Also, looking strategically at, those kids that come back, we have to teach them. So there's gonna be a cost associated with us. Some of those could come back into programs where it didn't seem like we would have to add a lot of teaching staff. We could absorb them. And that actually worked, uh, right? That, that worked pretty well. And it also worked pretty well, because our AA degrees are at a record level. So, you know, they're very adamant, though, that we really shouldn't be paring down or eliminating any classes. But part of that original conversation is, is what, where we did all come to the table, Dr. Ritchie, myself, and, and all of us. And i, it's really gone forward with, with his folks and, and, um, Ms. Van Meter. I would say we have a better relationship with Eastern Florida than what exists in many localities. But, having said that, Doc, if Dr. Ritchie were here, he would say, and he's, he's said it on a couple of occasions, the law says this, and so that's, um, you know, that's what we're gonna apply. So I, you know, I, I want you to know, we have tried to look at return on investment, look strategically, what's our cost gonna be? If these kids all came back, there'd be a lot of cost in, in teacher units. Probably not what we're paying for dual enrollment, but that's where you try to, that, that is the cost-benefit analysis. How valuable is it that we are the state leader in students who walk across stages with AA degrees? That's, we may, from up here, say it's not valuable at all, so we're gonna eliminate the program, at which point, I can tell you, Dr. Ritchie would say, well, wait a minute now. N, no, you can't do that, because the law doesn't allow that. And I think Cindy, you can probably add to some of those discussions. But, um, we, we did try to take a very strategic approach from a cost-benefit analysis standpoint. You know, in, in benefit for kids and cost for us, and, and, and what ultimately they come away with.
You're fine, go ahead.
What I took away from our conversation, and it leads along the line of what Dr. Bingley said, is that, yes, we're required by law to do this. And basically, Eastern Florida State College is protecting themselves from this cost. They don't wanna br, take it on, because by law, they don't have to.
Correct.
So. And, and we, we have been, you know, I have a great relationship with Dr. Meter, and, and we continue to look at ways to somehow save money. Um, I was telling Mr. Craig just this morning that they've agreed to let us have a room at each of the college campuses to store textbooks, which will bring those 16 high schools, instead of having solo piles of textbooks, we can bring them together and then share between schools, which is very difficult to do at this time. So they're continuing to, they're continuing to help us. Mr. Craig asked some very good questions. We've never gone back and looked at what the cost is of students who have withdrawn, that we've already had to pay the bills. So that is something that we can get some figures for you on.
Dr. Bingley did address two points that I was gonna bring up. One, how great a partner they are, and how they helped us out when we had the bomb dropped on us, and brought our cost down by, I, I think they brought our cost down by almost four or five million dollars in the initial year, which was great through, I think through a grant or something of that nature. But I wanna point out that although it looks like we're in the red, we're spending money, um, on this, and Dr. Bingley alluded to this, but I wanna clarify for the public, that, that they understand what he was, specifically what he's saying, is that if we were to end this program, this is a question I asked back, if we were to end this program and bring all of these kids back into our schools, we would have to hire an abundance of teachers to teach the courses that they would then enter. And in that first year, that cost exceeded what we were paying Eastern Florida State College. So we can, again, probably quickly analyze what that cost would be, subtract it from what we're spending, and find that there's a very lit, very slightly in the red, uh, for this program. And, and the only reason I say that is I see that our number of courses is down a little bit, because we've reduced, um, the offerings. But I, I still don't believe that we're that much in the red, and, and not certainly by the amount that we're showing here in this figure.
And, um, we have reduced. We were about over 650 courses. We're down to 189. And if there was no dual enrollment program, we'd have to create seats for almost 12,000 more students in different courses during the day. And that would cost an extensive amount of money.
Okay, Mr. Craig?
Just to, to clarify, I'm not questioning the, uh, the validity or the, uh, the applicability of the program. I think it's phenomenal. Um, I, I hope when my kids get to that age, that they're able to take advantage of it. My, uh, concern is, is that, um, is that we keep that, the dialogue open amongst all levels of, of both organizations. I, I think Ms. Van Meter's done a fantastic job in working at that level. Uh, I think that we need to elevate it to full leadership level, and we should be meeting, you know, my request would be that, that the superintendent and the, and the president of, of our, our major partner in education in this county are meeting on a regular basis to discuss issues exactly like this. And lay out what our concerns are, so that we can come to an agreement, and, and, and at least get the items on the table from a leadership level, so that we, uh, from a leadership level, so that we have understanding across both organizations of what our, what our limitations are, what our concerns are, so that we can continue to offer such a great program, and maybe even improve upon it.
Just one thing I will add, that now that this, everybody, all sixty-seven school districts have had to live this for a couple of years, one of the things that we've not done purposely, there are other districts who have tried to calculate, okay, they're going to, then I'm going to itemize my guidance counselor, I'm going to itemize hours, and I'm going to bill the, the universities. And I, from my observation of that, where that has happened, those relationships have become very adversarial. And, and, you know, we're, we've been in constant conversation about what's being discussed at the table, and, and just purposely not going down that path, because then it really does become something we've never had with Eastern Florida. And that is, now we're going to go tit for tat, and start being adversarial. And that's what's happened in, in a lot of school districts. So, I, I still think we're, we're in a far better place than, than most.
Okay. Are you willing to approve? Move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mrs. Belford. See, I'm going to get this right now. Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Next item up, Mrs. Henderson, student accommodation plan. I mean, you don't have this item memorized yet?
Well, I, I pulled this item, because this is just a reminder, as, you know, several years ago, the board at that time made a request that we try to eliminate portables. And one of the things, because we were redistricting schools, we were trying to level out everything. And, and some of the things that were also looked at, at the time, instead of moving portables, because the cost here is, you know, not cheap, to move portables, was to look at moving programs within the schools. And the area superintendents were supposed to be looking at what programs they could move to other schools, to eliminate the possibility of portables. I just want to make sure that we continue to look at that, because I think that that's really important. And I want to know if it was done this year, and, you know, in the future, are we going to continue to look at programs that could be moved to different schools, rather than spending a quarter million dollars on moving portables?
Good question.
Good morning. As, as I believe you're aware-
Besides, I wanted to see you this morning.
Thank you. As you're aware, the student accommodation plan is a process whereby we involve the principals and the area superintendents, in about a two and a half month long process that does exactly that. We ask them what they would need in terms of facilities to accommodate students and programs for the next year. As part of that process, the, the principals provide their input to the area superintendents, and I know that the area superintendents, I don't want to speak for them, but I can assure you that they, they go out, they send their coordinators out, they walk through the schools, and come back with a recommendation to us. I, and my staff, challenge those recommendations, and, because we, we say, is there something else that you can do? And we've had those very discussions about perhaps making a room internal, a, a permanent room, dividing a room into two rooms. And we've done that in the past. It, it, the cost varies, depending on the situation. But the, the takeaway from this conversation is that that process does exactly what you've asked. And by the end of that process, after the superintendent, I'm sorry, the assistant superintendent, the area superintendent challenges the principals, and we challenge the area superintendents, you can be assured as a board, that we're pretty confident that that is what we need to do to accommodate those students and programs for the following year.
Thank you, Dane. And then my next question would be, at what point, instead of, and we're moving two portables this year to a school, if the, if the population continues to increase there, at what point does the district look at redistricting, rather than moving portables? Because adjacent schools may not be at full capacity, and I think that's also something that needs to be looked at.
As a matter of fact, as, as we continue to move portables at school, to a specific school, year after year, and our projections show that that enrollment is projected to increase, we would be coming back to the board with a, a recommendation to at least consider rezoning. I, I believe that you'll see that this coming fall, where we would come back with at least one, and perhaps two situations, where we would be recommending the board to consider moving forward with redistricting. You may or may not choose to do that, but that is part of that process.
Thank you. That's all. Okay, yes.
Ms. Theodore, how are the portables selected for, for move? How do you go through that process?
A, a couple of criteria. One, distance plays a small part in it. It's a per mile charge, but that's a very small charge relative to all the other stuff that is attendant to those costs. We look at a couple of things. One, if it's an elementary school, we want to, we want to take a surplus portable from an elementary school, because it has elementary furniture in it. If we take it from a high school, we have to change out the furniture. And two, I look at, if, if the school is going to be declining, the school that we're taking it from shows a projection for decline, declining enrollment in the future, I would, I would be fairly certain that, that we won't need them there. In other words, it would be silly to take a portable from a school where I'm going to need it in three or four years.
I guess that was my question. So, Lewis Carroll, you're still projecting that to decline?
It's, it has seven, I think it had seven portables up there. I don't see an enormous, I, I think it was a decline, actually. So, I, I don't have that in front of me right now, but it was either, it was either steady, or a decline, or else I wouldn't have moved those portables.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While, while I'm up here, and I know this is unusual, but allow me to take the opportunity. You approved a educational plan survey, as part of the consent agenda. And while I don't want to take a lot of time, I, I do think it's important for the board and the public to know a couple of things, relative to that particular item. One, there's, there's a guide that's attached to that, that has a lot of historical information, and I think it's valuable for boards and, and the public to read. Two, there's a resolution attendant to that, that, where you've authorized the sale of two surplus parcels of land. We will be, per statute, because the value is a hundred thousand dollars, anything over a hundred thousand dollars will be advertised three times in the paper. So, I wanted to assure the board and the public, that the process that we go through to, to hopefully dispose of those two properties, would be a publicly advertised process, three times in the, in the newspaper. Two other things. One, what is in the educational plan survey, even though it's not required to be in there, is all of our sales tax projects. We wanted to include those in there to, for the public to see those. What is not in that educational plan survey, are the two new schools that we will be needing, those two elementary schools. Very specifically, the DOE is not approving those schools. They say we have capacity typically up north, in Merritt Island. We can't get to those schools from where the, we need the school, we, we can't get to that capacity from where we need the schools. That's problematic in the sense that we therefore cannot use ad valorem money to either pay directly for those schools, or even to pay a, a bond, or, or a cop, if we chose to do that. So, what we're relegated now to use exclusively, effectively then, for the new new capacity, is impact fees. And you know that we've, we've asked to consolidate those impact fee districts. We have some information you'll be, I'll be sharing with you, relative to the, the impact fee committee's meeting. I think that they, we, we will be seeing a couple of districts, and, and I'll, I'll share that information with you in, in the near future. And that is it. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to-
Okay.
-share that information with you.
Okay. Ready to approve the item?
Move to approve?
Thank you.
Okay. Who seconded it? Okay. Motion, I didn't hear, I wasn't for sure. Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Craig.
It was Harold.
I was going to say, say Harold, pipe down. Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay. My goal's to be out of here by ten forty-five now, guys. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I think we have one more item. Who had F-?
F-27.
F-27? Is that you?
Yes, it's me.
Okay. You're on.
The wheel loader, I just, I had a question. The, this is replacing a DCR item that, interestingly, was in our service shop in January, determined not economical to repair, put a request into DCR, and in February, came to the board on Feb., on, on April fourteenth, for approval to be DCR, now coming to us for purchase. Assuming it hasn't been purchased yet, what have we been doing for a front-end loader all these, all the year?
We've been renting one.
Okay. And, and how often does, does that happen?
How often do we rent equipment? Typically not. This is a very, as you see, expensive piece of equipment. It, it's necessary for mulching the playgrounds, so we had to do something until we had board approval to purchase a new one.
I'm aware of what it does. I'd love to have one around my yard, but my wife just won't cut loose with that kind of money. All right, I was just curious. That's what I want people to understand, is when we don't have equipment that we use, we have to rent, and that gets very expensive.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Second.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion was made to approve by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Further discussion? Please vote. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, I don't feel in need of a break?
No break.
No break. So, let's go into the-
Fifteen minutes.
No. Okay, let's go into the action agenda. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you. Ms. Nisi, we have one item under this category. Item G-29 is to hold a public hearing, and approve the revision of policy sixty-three forty, modifications and alterations to school buildings as recommended.
Okay, the public hearing's declared open. Does any individual wish to speak on the revision of policy sixty-three forty? Any individual wish to speak on policy sixty-three forty? Then I will conclude the public hearing. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any further Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to the information agenda. The information agenda includes items for voir de revue, and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items today. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Nisi. There are six items under the information category.
Does any board member wish to discuss anything? Yes, ma'am.
H-30.
H-30, the Title II Part A grant? Okay.
Let me introduce Shereen Lucden. She is our Title II project manager, and she has all the answers to everything.
All right. Nothing like high expectations. I like that. Welcome.
Good morning.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Yes, hopefully, hopefully I'll address your questions in regards to Title II. Title II, first and foremost, is for professional development, for your leadership and your teachers, and it's also got some recruiting funded in there as well. And we have parameters in the grant every year that change as to what we can write to, and what we specifically have to identify within our needs assessment that the district addresses. So, what questions would you like me to go through, Mrs. Belford?
One of the points of clarification, a concern from one of our citizens, is within that Title II funding, do we have any responsibility, as a result of receiving those funds, to increase our evaluation assessment measurement of student performance in any way, shape, or form?
No. There is nothing directly linked to student achievement.
And the focus of the professional development that's conducted with that grant funding, is there any restriction on the type of professional development that we do, or the focus area of the professional development?
Title II is an entitlement grant, and we fall still under nickel B. It hasn't been reauthorized, no Child Left Behind. So, the first thing that we have to address are core subject areas alone, which include your math, your math, English, science, history. It also encompasses your arts, which can encompass drama, music, and we also encompass your foreign languages, your world language. So, that's one of the, those are the only areas that we can address. So, anything beyond that cannot be addressed through Title II with professional development. But our needs assessment, we look at our school improvement plans individually from all the schools, and we look at their direct needs. That's one of our needs assessments that we look at. We also have all of our resource teachers who receive an allocation specifically in their content area, they develop a plan. Now, our grant is due June thirtieth. We, of course, know that our data from our current testing is not fully in, so it's also a tentative plan. And then they go back and they reevaluate based upon the data that we receive, to drive their professional development. Many of our resource teachers, as well as what we're looking at when we're talking about school improvement plans, where they're getting input from the teachers directly, based upon their personal needs. Some of the things, Diane Gard, for example, in our elementary program, goes over every single fifty-five elementary school school improvement plan, as well as the data that comes in in the middle of the summer, and revises her entire plan for the following year. So, it's a, it's a really thoughtful process on their parts. The directors, as well, of elementary, middle school, and high school work with their resource teachers, in developing those plans, and overseeing them. And then, of course, everything has to fall under the parameters of the grant, being allowable and allowable through the grant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Dr. Bingley, do we have any staff reports?
Yes, yes, Ms. Nisi, and members of the board. Dr. Beth Thede, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, will provide the board the brief update on the bullying policy. Dr. Thede, and-
Okay. I promised the board ten forty-five, so you have eight minutes.
I'll be quick. Thank you. Good morning, Mrs. Nisi, board members, Dr. Bingley. I'm here this morning to provide you with an update regarding the district's anti-bullying policy, our reporting methods, and the continuous efforts to combat bullying in our schools. As you know, policy fifty-five seventeen point oh-one is based on the state of Florida's model bullying policy. It includes definitions for bullying, and procedures for investigating the bullying incidents. Our anti-bullying policy is comprehensive, and covers all aspects of bullying, including dating, violence, and abuse. Based on the Jeffrey Johnston Stand Up For All Students Act, it prohibits sexual, religious, and racial bullying and harassment, to name just a few. Other prohibited conduct includes conduct which has the purpose or effect of creating an intimidating, hostile, discriminatory, or offensive learning environment on the basis of gender, religion, race, color, national origin, age, disability, marital status, or any other legally protected characteristic. Regardless of the reason for bullying, schools are charged with investigating the incidents that are reported to them. And that brings me to the, to the reason that I'm, part of the reason I'm here this morning. Some of the issues that were raised at the last board meeting by several of the speakers involve bullying. In speaking with one of the gentlemen last week, who spoke at the board meeting, I asked him to help me understand his comments related to the non-discrimination notice in bullying. He indicated that for LGBTQ students, reporting bullying is an issue, as according to this gentleman, LGBTQ students are less likely to report incidents of bullying for several reasons. Again, this is based on my conversation with this gentleman. One reason, he said, is because gender identity and sexual orientation are not part of the non-discrimination notice, and according to him, LGBTQ students don't feel protected. He indicated we would see an uptick in the number of incidents reported if LGBTQ students felt they were protected. Another reason he mentioned to me is similar to a reason many students don't report bullying, and that's because they fear either nothing will be done, or that the reporting of bullying will make the, the issue worse for them. So, that brings me into what we do. Schools have procedures that must be followed when an incident of bullying is reported. These procedures include initiating an investigation based on the student, witness, and/or parent statements. Parents and students may access the forms and procedures, including the training documents for parents and students, on the district webpage. I'll post all of that information on the For the Record site, so that they, they can see that web address. Once a report of bullying has been submitted, either by a parent, student, teacher, or staff member, the school administration then is on a timeline to investigate and hopefully resolve the issue. But I will- But I will tell you, we face a lot of issues, both in reporting the bullying and attempting to resolve the issues between and among students. Bullying is defined as an unwanted and repeated, written, verbal, or physical behavior, including any threatening, insulting, or dehumanizing gesture which is severe or pervasive enough to create an intimidating, hostile, or offensive educational environment. One of the challenges we face is determining whether or not, determining the difference between bullying and conflict. At times, the reported incident is actually a com-, a conflict between students that doesn't rise to the level of bullying. Conflict isn't about seeking attention or gaining power and control, but bullying is. Regardless, regardless of the reason for bullying, regardless of the report, schools investigate those issues which are brought to their attention, which presents the next challenge, I believe, we face, making students feel comfortable reporting incidents. To that end, along with the area superintendents, Mark Langdorff's office, and district and school security, we train assistant principals for discipline at the secondary level, all of the assistant principals at the elementary level, and guidance counselors at all levels on the process and procedures for bullying. We provide, we, for the guidance counselors, we make sure they are aware, because oftentimes, they're the first line of defense for students when they are feeling bullied. They'll go to their guidance counselor first, so we make sure we have that covered. Last October, we had an in-service with an attorney who discussed bullying, among other topics, and she's coming back this year and presenting to all principals, assistant principals, ESC support specialists, and guidance personnel as well. I've spoken with my team and relayed the concerns of the speakers at the last board meeting, and we are working to revise our training materials so that we may support and train our schools, and our school personnel better, so that they, in turn, can train and support our students. I believe another important part of this discussion is about steps schools are taking. Three years ago, after a conversation with Dr. Bingley, we began the development of the youth leadership teams at our secondary schools. In each fall, we train groups of students and faculty sponsors, and those teams then go back to their schools and develop programs for their students that are, that meet the needs of the school. I had some examples, but I, I, I won't go through all of them. I can do that at a later time, if you would like. But we, our schools have done a variety of things, from developing peer counseling clubs to classes, to going to the elementary schools and working with elementary students. They have done, participated in video contests with the sheriff's department. We share all of that information with other students so that they can get ideas about what other schools have done and then implement programs in their schools. The other, the other thing that I find important to combat the issue of bullying is the community involvement. And our community has become involved and is involved in bullying. And they recognize that bullying is not just a school problem, but it's also a community problem. Some of those examples include Andretti Thrill Park as a no-bullying zone, a Taylor for Teens Town Hall Forum that was recently held in April, and a partnership we're investigating with Parish Medical Center around bullying and teen suicide. In closing, I believe we're making progress, but I will not tell you we're perfect. Our policies and procedures are audited by the Florida Department of Education, and in a recent face-to-face audit with the Florida Department of Education, the auditors were impressed with the level of commitment from our students and our schools. In fact, Penny Taylor, the director of the Healthy Schools who conducted the audit, commented and thanked Brevard for being leaders in the bullying movement, or the anti-bullying movement, I should say. However, that being said, I truly believe we have more work to do, and we are always reflecting on our procedures and revising as necessary to make the biggest impact on our schools and our students. And I really appreciate and thank you for your continued attention and support of this really critical matter. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a comment and bring something to the board's attention. It came up when we were at the Taylor for Teens Town Hall Forum. We have what we refer to as a Speak Out hotline. And there seems to be some concerns about that hotline in that it's more of a crime, national crime hotline, and not necessarily a counseling-type hotline. And although it's free and free is nice, I don't think it particularly serves our needs well in this area. And I would like to look into an alternative service that, something more lines, along the lines, if not specifically, something like 2-on-1 Brevard, where students, people, or even, even employees in need can call up, get very responsive answer, get assistance. I believe they're even going to a digital method of, of assistance with that program. And there would be a small cost associated with it, but I think that this board and this district take it seriously enough that it'd be negligible compared to the improvement in service to our community. So I'd like the board to direct staff to look into that, because I think it's extremely important.
I'd like to know what our options are, yeah.
Yeah, and at the same time, though, I do want to thank staff. I am so impressed with, with district-level staff and, and school-level staff that attends all of these events and works closely with the kids, because the two big areas here are awareness and assistance. And the kids are doing a great job, and staff's doing a great job of awareness, and, and with assistance. But let's step up the assistance with a better service to our community.
Certainly.
I would certainly support that recommendation for us to look into options beyond Speak Out, but I also wanted to echo Mr. Ziegler's sentiments as far as our staff. Sorry.
Take your time.
Our north area especially has been hit hard. And Dr. Thede, as well as all of her staff, have been very hands-on up there, working towards solutions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thede. Okay, I think, as we go into board reports, I think you had a request you wanted to add as a board request?
Uh, yes, I did. You'll be doing it now.
Well, I had a, I had a board request. I don't know if Ms. Irwin's working on that for me. Okay, why don't you go on ahead while she's working on that?
I know that all of you talked with Ms. Van Meter about the dual enrollment and the proposed curriculum-aligned assessments for 2015-16. In looking at this, we have seventeen, 78 new assessments based on the different areas. And here's what I was thinking, is that I recall last year when we started the district end-of-course assessments, that when it was brought to, when it was brought to the board, it was brought because, it was brought, we were going to be 1,300, then it was down to 900, and now it's 78 new tests. So my question is this, and this is the information I want from you, is that, and maybe it, it's going away, I don't know. But I would like to know the position that was created for these 900 tests. I would like you to give a board an update on how that position is now being used for 78 new tests, which is much less. It was going to be a temporary, maybe six-month or a year slot. And so I want to know where we are with that, when it would come back up for review to the board, you know, because it could get slipped in in one of our administrative appointments here. We wouldn't know, we wouldn't necessarily, unless you go through it specifically, you wouldn't necessarily know. So I want to know when it's coming up for renewal, what the cost is of that position to the district. I know that we partnered at the time with Workforce, but I want to know if, in fact, this position is still necessary, because at the original onset of it, it was such an enormous task. So that's my question.
Okay.
And you don't have to provide it now, but provide it to the board.
Okay. The only thing I would say to you is, you're right. It was 1,300, it was 900. And at that time, you know that we were responding to legislative language. And at that time, those assessments were tied directly into teacher performance and into their appraisal and into their then-pay-for-performance. And all of that has changed as far as what is happening with those assessments. However, the value of those assessments has not changed, and what it can accomplish for us. And that's why the 900 is down to a proposal of 204. And as far as that position goes, I will just tell you, as we started through the process of thinking we were rolling out 900 tests, we realized that it was impossible to do with just a sole person, that it would require a department to help us do that. With it being down to 204, we do believe it is more manageable with a single person responsible for the distribution, the collection, the printing, and all of that. So as far as the need for that sole position does exist, the desire to add more personnel to help does not remain at this time, because it's only 204. But that will be coming before the board. I have to be honest with you. I think she started in November, and I'm just not sure about her contract.
Okay, and, and at the time, there was discussion about whether this position would be the person who would upload all this stuff to the database, into the repository, or if it was going to be the resource teachers or somebody else down the line. So I just, I, I would just like a, a total update on what exactly she does, she, he does, and just update the board on that.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Did you take a look at that for me? Yeah, I just want him to take a look at that. Did you sense that the meeting went a little longer, Dr. Bingley? We have our own planned certain activities going on together. So come on down, everyone. So come on in, everyone. You know, Brian, this is, I don't think I've ever seen you speechless before. Let's get everyone come in. Come on in, let's get everybody in. I think we had a couple hundred people respond to us. And let me tell you, this was a 30-minute board meeting that we had to expand out to an hour and 15 minutes. I have never, in my 11 years as a board member, ever went around to senior staff and say, "We're going to draw this out."
And after yesterday, we really didn't want to do that.
So come on in, come on in. Come on in. I want to get everybody in here. And every time Brian tried to have closure with me, I had to brush him off and say, "Ah, suck it up." Come on in, everyone. Come on in. Did you have any idea, by the way? Keep coming. And in they come, and they keep coming.
You kept it secret, Sherry?
Oh, there's Sherry. Okay. Dr. Bingley, I don't think we can express our appreciation enough for all you've done since your arrival in 2009. You came at a time when the bottom felt like, felt like it was falling out from under us, and you've seen us through some very challenging times. You've always remained ever-humble while possessing the highest caliber of integrity, and no one can ever doubt that you are our kid's biggest champion. You will be greatly missed, but we wish you every success on your new path. Please accept, on behalf of the board and the staff, this little token you get as you get ready for your next adventure. So we're asking you that you trade in your, your suspenders for your hat and a string tie. Well, and we have one something, as you really know, I've got more to say. As you guys go down there. Anne, you know at every board meeting when Dr. Bingley recognizes administrative staff who've taken on new leadership roles, he always thanks their families. He realizes that these leaders would not be able to do the jobs that they do without the love and support of their families. So Sherry, we realize that you have had a lot of date nights at the football fields and robotics and science fairs, and Dr. Bingley would not be able to give us all to our district and our kids without you beside him. So thank you for your continued support, and best wishes to you. Now, can we get a photo up? A real one? All of the board members, Sherry. And this is to hang in your office.
Hopefully, you get it, so you can never forget. Get all the fun.
Sherry, get in there.
So, we were dragging out the board meeting? Oh, we thought we were moving along.
Hold on a second. Brian, the best is yet to come. At this time, we'd like to share with you a video tribute put together by Jackie Wyatt in HR. I'm going to go down there. I'm going to go down there. Okay. Well, while you get your thoughts together, while we finish up the rest of the board meeting, everyone's going to feel free, feel free to mosey on over to the barbecue being prepared by our own master barbecuer, Jeremy Solomon, principal of Ogali High, and his amazing volunteers from plant operations, and we will join you shortly. So I'll let you say a few words and then we're going to get back to our board meeting.
Um, wow.
Here, let me turn your mic on.
Okay.
Never known you speechless.
Well, I see some folks here from our community. You know, a lot of principals, we were just at Harris a few days ago and I had opportunity to tell them and I, I'll say it here again. I am better. I'm a better, I'm better personally and I'm better professionally for having been here. And I told them, some of that is a little bit, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger, you know? Because this is certainly not the easiest thing I've ever done. But the bigger part of that is that this is an organization full of people who just care a lot about each other and then they care deeply about the mission of serving children. And as I told them, that may be the biggest compliment that I can ever give anybody in our profession. So much of the technical stuff, we can all figure out, but if you don't hold in your heart a real commitment that this work ultimately changes lives and makes a difference for children and in so many cases, those who, if we don't do it for them, there's no one that can or will, and you've heard me make that phrase a lot. We just, we are blessed by a ton of people in this organization who live that every day and I see some folks that are here from the community. I thank you so much for being here, but way beyond that, you're here because you've been so embedded in this organization to help us in that mission. I can't thank you enough for what that means ultimately for our kids. And so for those of you who took the time out to come here this morning, thank you for that. If Jeremy's cooking barbecue, you're going to get to eat well because he knows what he's doing on that machine. And to the board, I, you know, I'll remain ever appreciative of the opportunity that, that I've had here. I mean that very sincerely and I just can't thank you enough for this. I really, this means an awful lot to me. So thank you very, very much.
Okay, so why don't we give you a few minutes to head over to the barbecue? We have some, we actually have some business we have to finish up, so.
We really do? Where's the barbecue?
Where is it?
It's really, there's.
I don't know, Pam, where's the barbecue at?
In the courtyard. They just go through that room.
Through that room? It's in the courtyard.
Wow.
So we really kept you in secret, huh?
Yeah.
Tammy has put, she's the chief elf. She, along with Pam, did a great job.
Wow.
So I'm going to give them a moment to clear the room here. I'm so glad you brought that out. Well, can we? No, John had, John had a, had a request. If we can get those people, could staff in the back, get some of the people to go out through the back there because we just have a couple things we need to do?
Relatively quiet now.
Can everybody hear? Okay, John, I knew you had a request.
Yeah, real quick and actually just a couple quick. First of all, I met Brian in September of 2009 at Leadership Brevard and I still remember the ropes courses out in Oviedo where we tried to build a human bridge or something and that was, that was pretty humorous, but I, his passion for our kids' education affected me then and it always has. My kids are in a better place because of him, so thank you. The, two quick requests. One is I want to get the ball rolling on our legislative platform for this year. I think we made some good inroads this year. We've still got more to attack. We sat, I sat down with a few principals and APs and testing coordinators in the last couple of weeks and some good proposals that have come out of those. I'd like to make sure we roundtable those and discuss them and figure out what we need to do, but we need to get started on that now. I know the session isn't even over yet for this year, but we're probably already behind. So I want to make sure we, we get that on a workshop as soon as possible so that we can start figuring out what our priorities are going to be and what we're going to attack next because I think we did a good job this year and it was all prior board members that started that ball rolling, so thank you. The second thing is, is that Dr. Bingley, I just asked that over the next couple of weeks, you provide us a transition plan, an itemized list of what you intend to do as a pass down so that we are kind of all on the same page. We understand how that transition process is going to work from, from your office and that, that you give us that so that if we have any questions or something that we can, we can interject that as well because I think we really need to make sure that this, it's a tight timeline and certainly you've got a lot of other stuff going on and we want to make sure that we don't miss something in between there so that we don't have to call you back from Texas along the way. But hopefully we have identified someone soon, but I think having that written plan gives us all a place to start from so we know what to expect.
Okay. Do you have anything to add? I know we're kind of just jumping into kind of board reports here too at the same time.
On the legislative platform, I am going tomorrow to FSBA to bring up some issues for the legislative platform because I do believe that we're going to get started on that ASAP from a state perspective. So if you want to give me anything that I could look at. Also, one of the things that I'll be bringing up with them is, is a letter that I put together to the governor. And I think that we, we could do it as a board, but I'm kind of thinking that we need bigger buy-in. And what has happened is that the state hired a company to do validity and reliability on our assessments. The problem is, one company applied for the job and they got it. They happen to be from Utah. That could be a problem. I don't know if they, you know, verified their testing, but if they verified it out there, I'm not sure that we're going to be verified over here any differently. My concern is that they're only bringing in eight people. There's a lot of assessments for eight people to go through in a two-month period of time. So I was thinking, how could the state do something different that would allow us to have buy-in from teachers and parents and school districts? And I talked to Brian a little bit about it and to some of the senior staff because I, I, what I'm proposing is something that's actually kind of simple and it wouldn't take a lot of time. It would cost the state money because we would obviously want to compensate our teachers. But we could do it a couple of ways and I'm kind of suggesting three ways, like a north, central and south section of teachers and every district get somebody for, teachers for second grade ELA, second grade math, all the way up through and including our end of course tests. If every teacher that was on these teams for those grade levels took just a couple of questions and said, "Are they a part of our standards? Is it a trick question? Does it belong here?" And, you know, have a matrix that they fill out. If we did it with three different sections, we could verify how it was perceived by teachers from all areas. And the problem with the testing companies, there's no way that they're going to be able to go over every question. So they're going to be sampling. So they're going to miss the questions that our students have said, "This doesn't apply. You didn't give me enough information for." So then they'll say, "Oh, everything's valid" because they picked a question that actually did work. So I'm kind of trying to figure out a way that, and I'm open to suggestions and you can talk to me about it if you want, but I'm, something I wanted to bring up at a state level because I thought if we all got on board and kind of sent a message to the governor that we want teachers to look at these tests and not our resource teachers, but the teachers who actually give the tests because they're the ones who know those standards, who know what's supposed to be on those tests. So I'm, I did write a letter, I can send it to you guys so you could, I didn't send it yet, but if you want to look at it, if you want to give me comments and input, I'm, I'm all ears. But I just sometimes feel like we have to do things differently and if we could get the state and if we send it to Chris Affoley and to some of the other legislators, maybe we could find another way to do validity and reliability for our students that actually made sense. Because in addition to what this company is, they're not just looking at the test, but they will be looking at why, you know, we were hacked and all those other computer problems, which the teachers wouldn't be, but we would have specific focus on what they taught. Any thoughts?
Yeah, send, I'd like to see your letter.
I would love to see the letter as well. I think that's a good idea, what you're putting forth. The only thing that I would add and it really has nothing to do with your plan, but I think certainly something that needs to be brought up in determining the reliability and validity of the testing is I'm not sure how you measure the impact of all of the glitches on how reliable the test is in determining student success. And so, I mean, obviously we need to limit it to a certain sector that we can think about, but I think that we still need to continue to communicate that message that this whole thing was a mess and regardless of how many times we look at the questions, we probably can't truly understand the impact that those experiences had on our kids.
I completely agree with that.
Andy?
Sorry. Earlier this week, I went to the Brevard Educational Technology Conference with Andy. It was over here at Vera High School. It was put on by our technology department and we had over 500 teachers from our district filled Vera High wanting to learn more about technology and how it's going to be used in the classrooms and it was just really great to see, you know, one of the first few days of summer break for them and they were in, in service. And I want to thank IT for putting that on. It was, I got great feedback from the teachers and thank you for inviting us.
Andy?
Hi, I'd like to start out by publicly thanking Dr. Bingley, which I've done many times at events that we've attended, but I want to say the same thing I've said there is that you came in at probably the worst possible time in educational history, not only in Florida, but in, in Brevard with unbelievable challenges, financial challenges that are just unsurmountable. You brought us through that in a very positive way. We are as good, if not better than we were when you came on board. Financially, we're in great shape. Your leadership has been fantastic. I appreciate you being there to help us and to guide us. It's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you very much. And of course, the only, not much of a board report, other than we got Florida School Board Association conference, spring conference this week where we go get more educated on things going on around our state and align with other districts and learn some more best practices that we could bring back. I think all five of us are going. It's a, it's a couple packed days of events, so we'll see you all next week.
Misty?
I don't have an enormous amount to add, but I did want to take an opportunity to thank Pam who has been running like crazy through the superintendent search process, taking on a whole lot beyond her regular duties and she has done a phenomenal job of keeping up with it all and not losing her mind, or at least we hope not losing her mind in the process. So I think it's important for us to recognize her in that process as well.
That was exactly what I was going to say in my board report. You stole my thunder. So just ditto to what everybody else was going to say, so that's an advantage of going last of everything you guys already said. So, Dr. Bingley, do you have a superintendent's report?
Well, again, let me say thank you. You know, I want to make sure I'm clear, Mr. Craig and board, you know, certainly my intention was to make myself available after July 1, before July 1, whatever. I mean, that's been done for me. I'll do it for someone else to answer any and every question and that won't stop at the end of one conversation as person learns more and wants that, you know, I'll make myself available. I certainly wanted to try to convey what I felt were some real challenges that we faced and some real opportunities, at least from where I sit. And that's one of the things that I wanted to try to kind of just have at the ready. I certainly am going to stop short of saying, "Here's how you ought to solve them" because that's, that's not, not the place. But I do want to make sure if there's, if there's things other than that, that you feel need to be done, please let me know that and I will do, you mentioned something in writing, so.
I think it's more of a, it's a short timeline. So it's a timeline of when you, you know, when are you going to have time to sit down? And I know you say you make yourself, but you've got a lot of stuff on your plate as well. And so I think it's important that, that we have it, if and when we appoint a new superintendent, we say, "Here you go. Here's your next two weeks and this is what you can expect," at least from a plan to deviate from, rather than just wandering in and, you know, we'll see how it goes. I think it's important to present that as a professional transition plan, as a, hey, these are the items that you need to think about on day one and certainly you've got some other things that I know that, that are, that are critical, that are goods, that are others, all those types of things. And those are individual discussions I know you'll have with whoever that person is, but I think it's important that at least we give some sort of format of how the process is going to work from your standpoint. This is a, you know, transition that you're handing the keys over to someone else, so now it's, I think it's important for that person to, to be able to, to have some sort of, especially since it's only less than two weeks of what they can expect and where their time is going to be spent. That's all.
Okay. And included in that will be some of the partnerships players. My recommendation is these are the folks you might talk to sooner rather than later. I assume you'll have some of those as well. Any, whichever you select should provide you with an entry plan that. Any, whichever you select should provide you with an entry plan that, but sometimes you, you don't know what you don't know. So I would love to walk through that and fill in any.
I'm assuming his chair, I'll have an exit meeting with him.
Yeah, any, any holes that I feel like, here's a, here's a thought, not a recommendation, but a thought about what might be valuable in that first 90 days or what have you, right down to the things we're going to be discussing with Superintendent's Association, and you name it. So I think that, I think we're on the same page with that. And the only thing I'll add is that, you know, yesterday, last two days, Ben, with things with our, our foundation, and I just can't say enough about what our foundation does to go out there and, and help not only our most vulnerable kids, but the teachers of our most vulnerable kids who are champions. So I, you know, our, our foundation is, is doing so much to, to support this district. I just wanted to say thank you to them publicly, having had a couple days' worth of, of their efforts, and they put in a ton of time, so thank you for that. And again, let's go eat barbecue, but thank you very much to, to all of you for today. Thank you.
Okay. Any further business? Let's go eat barbecue. Meeting's adjourned.